Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. We're gonna open our regular business meeting. Time is seven twelve. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Opposed.
Motion carry. If we can open with the Pledge of Allegiance and then move into silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mode of silence tonight is for three individuals. First is Ray Kovaback, who's our retired mail carrier. Next is, in honor of Dan Amick, who worked with our ASK and middle school drama shows for many, many years. And the third one is for Kathy Space, the wife of longtime maintenance worker Harry Space. Thank you. Okay, and then I just need approval for this evening's board meeting agenda. Hey, a motion and a second, please.
Go.
All in favor? Opposed. Motion carry. Uh, we're gonna jump around a little bit, just because we got such a full house and a couple of things going on. So, we are gonna jump into presentations first. Uh, we're gonna do Item A, which is a preview from our Port Jervis Middle School Drama Club production of Newsies Junior, uh, again by the Drama Club Past.
Extra, extra, be all about it!
Extra, be all about it!
Would you like a pic?
Of course.
Which one of you guys would want a pic? You?
The Port Jervis Middle School Drama Club proudly presents Newsies Junior on May ninth at seven PM and on May tenth at one and seven PM at the Port Jervis Middle School, uh, sorry, Port Jervis High School Auditorium. Please join our Facebook event titled PJMS Drama Club Presents Newsies Junior. It's for all... What's it? Thank you. Up-to-date announcements and links.
You can see the post on the district website or the email coming out from Mr. Marata about the, uh... The ticket links. Yes. Close it up. They say folks is dying to get here. Me, I'm dying to get away. To a little town out west that's spanking new. And while I ain't never been there, I can see it clear as day. If you want, I betcha you could see it too. Close your eyes, come with me. Where it's clean and green and pretty. And they went and made a city out of clay. Why the minute that you get there, folks will walk right up and say, "Welcome home, son. Welcome home to Santa Fe." Planting crops, splitting rails, swapping tails around the fire set for Sunday when you lie around all day. Soon your friends are more like family and they's begging you to stay. Ain't that neat? Living sweet in Santa Fe. We can't back down now. Like it or not, now is when we take a stand. Come on, Davey. Tell them. Now is the time to seize the day. Stare down the odds and seize the day. Minute by minute, that's how you win it. We will find a way. But let us seize the day. Hey, Jack, look what I made. Good, huh? Strike!
That's great. Thanks. Any sign of reinforcements?
Davey? Now is the time to seize the day. Stare down the odds and seize the day.
Once we've begun, if we stand as one, someday becomes somehow. And a prayer becomes a vow.
And the strike starts here and now.
Sun is up and the birds are chirping. Step right up and get your papes.
You're working or trespassing? What's your pleasure?
We'll be out there carrying the banner, middle man. We're always out there soaking every sucker that we can. Here's a headline: Newsies on a mission. Kill the competition, sell the expedition. We'll be out there carrying the banner. See us out there, carrying the banner. Always out there, carrying the banner. Look at me, I'm the king of New York. Suddenly, I'm respectable. Stand right at you, lousy with stature. Glory be, I'm the king of New York. Victory, from backstory, guts and glory, I'm the king. Of New York!
Extra, extra, be all about it!
Did she have the headlines? There's a birthday today!
Maddie?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. L. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, at this time, I'd ask our high school principal, Anthony Lozaro, to come to the podium with a special unrecognition.
He's gonna sing?
I've been trying to mumble it, I've been mumbling. That was amazing. I don't know what to say right now, I'm kind of like, um, and honestly, we were at, uh, I mean, Team Day was chatting and talking about schedules and et cetera. And one of the things that came up was the continual progression and the amazing, uh, things that are happening in our music department, right? So, we had to have that today, and then to watch this, just, I'm honestly, like, amazed. That was tremendous. That was great. So, love for you guys. Alright, so I'm not, I'm here for something different. Alright, so, um, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. McLamenny, can I ask him to come up? I'm gonna embarrass him for a second. This is, uh, James McLamenny, one of our security guards. So, a few weeks ago, we were in, um, I'm in the office, I'm, uh, doing, uh, getting whatever done, and all of a sudden over the radio, we hear, "We need to go in the cafeteria." So, Dave and I, right, run. I beat Dave to the cafeteria. And I look over, and this is a girl choking, right? So, she's literally, like, choking, can't breathe, and behind her is Jake, and he's doing the hypn... So, his fast response saved this young lady's life, right? So, we see, he won the game. And then, it's because we've been able to do these things and bring people in. We had people on the spot trained and who knew what to do. Because it's, you can imagine how unnerving it is in that time. And having someone who understands how to be there in that measure of confidence, right? Who has that experience is life, is life-changing, literally. So, thank you, James. Thank you. And thank you, Gladys Adams. Thank you.
So, people, we're jumping around, again, going back to that full house. We're gonna jump to number six, Personnel Employment Agenda Items. Uh, we'll recognize our tenure appointments and then we'll, as a group, I think, just bang out the entirety of it. Okay. Tenure appointments to continue. We have, which is Item A, tenure appointments. Margaret Fitzgerald, Caroline Van Patton, Cara De La Monica, Demetra Palage, Melissa Siegel, Danielle Tierman, Austin Wilson, Christine Kilgore, Emily Mesnick, Jennifer Summers, and Matthew Gennaro. Item B, Retirement Cook Manager Kathy Ackley. Item C, Retirement Cook Manager Nancy Gold. Item D, Resignation Food Service Helper Chanel O'Connell. Item E, Resignation Cleaner Michaela King. Item F, Resignation English Language Learner Teacher Carrie Counts. Item G is Cinebupuses. Item H is Appointment 2025 Summer School Teachers, Nurses, and Substitutes. Item I, Appointment Probationary Math Teacher Maya Dewitt. Item J, Appointment Probationary Science Teacher, uh, forgive me, I'll try this, Manira Sylvin. Item K, Appointment Probationary Science Teacher Alexis Passer. Item N, Appointment Probationary Foreign Language Teacher Sarah Morjon. Item M, Appointment Probationary ESOL Teacher Veronica Valiente. Valience, I'm not sure how that's pronounced as well. Item N, Appointment Probationary Security Attendant Mark Long. Item O, Appointment Probationary Cleaner Yessenia Camacho. Item P, Appointment Substitute Security Attendant Sean Brockman. Item Q, Appointment Substitute Cleaners, uh, we have James Cram and Kathy Mart. Item R is an Amendment to the Board Doc, Personnel Agenda Item, Agenda Item, November fifteenth. Two thousand twenty-four, it was a rescindment of requirement Administrative Aid, Robin Hendershot. Item S is a Change in Status Support Stat, Probationary to Permanent Status. And finally, T is the Approval of the Equal Twenty-Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five Personnel Reporting Items. We have a motion and a second. Joe and Kathy. Joe for the motion, Kathy second. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carry. Congratulations. Can we have the new teachers that are here to stand up, just to wave and say hello? Okay, we did that. We did that, so you guys can sneak out if you want.
He said sneak out.
Okay, jumping back to presentations. We have the Port Jervis Youth Coalition, uh, social worker Jennifer Grismore, and students.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Grismore, the social worker at the high school. And I am one of the co-advisors to the Port Jervis Youth Coalition along with Abby Antalak, um, one of our math teachers at the high school, Stephen Montari from the Middletown Police Department, and Megan Robbins, who couldn't be here tonight, um, from Catholic Charities. I'm gonna spare you listening to me talk, because I'm really excited to turn this over to my officers.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Green, and I am the Social Chairman for the Port Jervis Youth Coalition. The Port Jervis Youth Coalition is a group of students with the, uh, the attitude to influence kids to stop using substances like vaping in schools and to promote mental health and... Well, nice and kindness. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. In this presentation, we hope to show you that the Port Jervis Youth Coalition is a dedicated group that organizes events for students and promotes awareness for important issues like anti-vaping and mental health. We've hosted a variety of activities, which will be talked about later on in the presentation. And our goal is to create a supportive community of poor young people and encourage mental health and positive choices.
Hi, I'm Yara Chiada. I'm the Secretary of the Port Jervis Youth Coalition. And one of the many activities that we do is Pin It Forward, which is every year the Coalition strives to share positive messages. One way we have done this is by having members decorate clothespins with creative designs and optimistic messages. They then, throughout the school day, can send messages on people's book bags and clothes to spread positivity, as you can see in the photo.
Hello, you want to be known as some commentary for the Port Jervis Coalition? And as part of the ethos and even the anti-vaping initiative, we have the fact that many vaping products, sorry, many vaping products are marketed with candy-like flavors. To raise awareness, we spread candy throughout the school with this informational, uh, sorry. You can see around the screens. Um, and this news is sour than speech, vaping can't come...
Hi, my name is Elliot Trujillo Casio. And one thing that we have at Port Jervis Youth Coalition, uh, we have at the school is we have a shop located in both boys' and girls' locker room. And honestly, it just has hygiene products that help with our students and especially those who have it and who needs it. And honestly, it's just there to help them. And we are collecting donations, so feel free to give us some.
Hi, my name is Janine Gonzalez, and I have the honor of being the President of the Port Jervis Youth Coalition. So, every year, due to events which are on the wall, we have our In-Home Text on Tobacco, and we also have our Event for Mental Health Awareness. In both of these situations, during lunch periods, we provide students with chalk and they can decorate outside and write positive messages to clear their mind or to spread positivity.
Hello, my name is Gray Shen. I'm the Treasurer for the Port Jervis Coalition. Our nothing to do with something we call Optimism Cookies or Tabling, where we all give out goods and spread information through tabling and just...
So, lastly, for our presentation, we have the honor to show you our PSA, PSA video that we made. So, we got shared today, and we're showing it to the public right now. But it was shared earlier on social media, so you might have saw.
Yes, and I would also like to thank, um, Chief Warden for giving us this opportunity. This is very special for us, because we've never really had an opportunity like this. We work with professional photographers in order to record a video to spread awareness about violence in schools. And I would also like to thank my advisors of this club. They're really special to us. And every year, they, like, really help us out to, um, spread positivity. And it's really great what they do, so I'd really like to thank them. And today is the first day we're showing this video to the public, so let's see if it works, hopefully.
I want to graduate high school.
I want to get back to my community.
I want to be a Roma.
I want to make an impact.
Teen violence causes injuries.
Teen violence kills.
Homicide is the third major cause of death for young people from ages ten to twenty-four.
Each day, approximately twelve young people are victims of homicide.
And almost fourteen hundred are treated in emergency departments for non-feelable self-reliant injuries.
That's one thousand four hundred people.
Young people, every day.
Teen violence has a long-term impact on health, opportunity, and welfare.
Teen violence is common.
An estimated one in five high school students report being bullied on school property.
Don't be a bystander. Sneak out. We choose hope, not fear.
There's just a little bit more added to the video today by Mr. Marata.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. I'm a social worker here at the high school. Um, I'm Abby Anla. I'm a math teacher. We are the co-advisors for the Port Service Youth Coalition along with our community partners, Edith Robinson Catholic Charities, and Stephen Montari from the Middletown Police Department. We're really excited and glad to see us on our video. It was a great opportunity for us to work with the Port Service Youth Coalition. Yeah, we just wanna congratulate our students on all their hard work and from writing the script to having the video of the students. I'm just, uh, and, um, really thank you on your investments of having the hard work and medical tragedies.
Ladies, thanks for your efforts. We're gonna bring, uh, a film here, we're gonna bring presents, so thank you. I'm gonna go for it.
Go for it.
My name is Wayne Ward. I'm the Chief of the Port Jervis Police Department. And on behalf of the Port Jervis Police Department, we congratulate the Port Jervis Youth Coalition and student actors. Again, this is a fine public service announcement. It's an announcement about infringing violence in our community and preventing tragedies. Thank you so much for your hard work, um, your efforts, and keep that in mind.
Geez, I'm gonna go for it. Go for it.
Can I get a go for it?
Thanks, everybody. Excellent job. Thank you very much. Okay, jumping back into it, uh, Chris, do we have anybody for... Hey, that brings us to reports. Uh, first up is our Student Board Representative Report from Anaya Green and Emma Far.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Far. I'm the Junior Representative. I'm in eleventh period. Thank you all for the opportunity to serve on the board. The Drama Club's showing of Annie took place the weekend of March twenty-eighth, including an amazing cast and musical backdrop. The seniors took their trip to Universal Studios and had an amazing time, break of horse spring break. Over break, Ms. Stancunas and Mr. Heizziav took seventeen, or took fifteen students to Yellowstone for the Winter College Research Project. PJHS Football Ring Ceremony was planned to both, and congratulations to the football players for their commitment to their sport. Um, last night, Port Jervis held their first-ever girls' lacrosse game on Glenette, which they scored the first point. It did not end up with a win, but they still scored. On the twelfth of April, students also welcomed veterans on the Honor Flight. Last night, Port Jervis, oh. Port Jervis High School Spring Spirit Week is, was going on this week, and the pep rally takes place tomorrow. It's fun to see everyone be included in the spring, and it also includes all the spring sports, and they get to be celebrated as well. Um, on the twenty-fourth, oh, today, the GSA Club got to see the outsiders in Broadway in New York.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Green. I am the Senior Representative. And thank you to the, uh, to the board for the opportunity to serve on the board. Parents' Fare is officially up and running. If parents are still not receiving email warnings, please reach out for assistance. Also happening tonight in the auditorium is Junior Information Night, which starts at six PM. On Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, the Port Jervis Youth Coalition will launch a new campaign for tobacco-free kids and the National, for the National Take Down Tobacco Day by organizing a chalk for walk, talking side walks filled with anti-tobacco, anti-smoking, and anti-vaping messages. On May first, College, Tech, Military, and ED Commitment Day will be taking place in the Port Jervis High School for seniors. Also, on May first, Multicultural Night will be happening in the high school gym at six PM. On May second, the Caipin Doll, Caipin Doll Awards will be happening at ten AM in the art hall. On May sixth, the Silver Collar Five-I-R-C Showcase will be at seven thirty to eleven thirty AM in the high school gym. On, on May eighth, Mount St. Mary College Trip will be taking place. And lastly, the Port Jervis City School District Annual Eight Through Twelve Art Show will be happening on May sixteenth in the high school faculty area from six to eight PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. John Bell, Supreme Lieutenant of Schools.
Good evening again, everyone. Also want to say one more time, congratulations on those getting tenure, those that got hired tonight, and those who really approved their retirements. All special events in your career. We will have a retirement, uh, ceremony at the junior meeting. It will also be honoring about twenty students at the junior meeting as well. As Emma had said, we had our first girls' lacrosse game. It was great to go to that field yesterday and see lacrosse on that field. And when we scored the first goal, every girl leaped off the ground. Nobody had their feet on the ground, including Big. We all cheered. We lost seven-two, but it was awesome. And not later, we have a game, and we actually scored, and we scored first, so it was so cool. So, we'll continue to try to recruit more and more girls to come out and play. The goal is to have a modified JV and varsity team. We'll sit in for a couple of years to build a program. We're also looking to see if we can start a boys' program as well. Also, the, uh, trip to Yellowstone Park was a huge success. Stacy, uh, Casey Stancunas, our high school department chair for science, took the group, and, um, they thought they could be in feet of snow, and they ended up having about...
the, 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 the,
Many zero increases in terms of five years. So that's something we should be proud about, proud of with dumbness and look at all the improvements. A hundred and fifty-six million dollars approximately in projects. If Phase Five continues through, so we're doing great things and we're tightening our belt and moving forward. So we're in great financial stability. We're in good shape. The message out there is we should start considering and thinking back then. We're going to start, we're not going to probably put out above zero, we can't afford to. We've chiseled down. The last presentation I had, I kind of described all those increases and I'll do it again in this presentation. All of those things that we're bearing in terms of retirement, health insurance, contribution, and transportation. Let me get to that slide and I'll talk to it more. But here's the budget highlights. And if you see the top half of this, it's a little darker and I'll read through them. But the reason I highlighted those is these are actually items that we have every year, that we expense every year. We want to maintain our current programs. In order to do that, you have to meet our contractual obligations. We just settled in the last year and a half, three major contracts, which is great. We did those on record time, I think less than a day. So Dr. Bell, we agree with that. The cost of inflation, the inflationary rate has gone up and we've kept it zero. It's crazy, somewhere on the average of five or six percent inflationary rate, we've kept it zero percent tax increase. As I discussed, there's an increase in debt service, which is that amount that we're borrowing. There's an increase in transportation that we're locked into. It increases, I think, five percent next year, then three percent the year after. Mr. Duryea discussed the increases in special education and the burdens that that have in order to, we provide services. And my last presentation, I discussed why I looked at the increase in health insurance, ERS and TRS. The lower portion of this are what we consider one-time items that I'm asking to put in this budget. There's a system called IED speaker system off foot to the next screen. And it looks very much like this. There are areas in the district, in the buildings, where you can't hear the announcements as well. So these particular monitors, they actually visually display that you would be in lockdown or any other announcement. So that's, it was very simple. We were thinking of putting them in the cafeterias, gyms, oratories, libraries, bandrooms rooms and courtyards. So this would be a great feature for us. When we do lockdowns, many of the schools put out feedback forms. And we, hey, I can't hear, I can't hear in this particular situation. I don't know where to hide here. We react to those, and this is one reaction to that bit of feedback. So kudos to the staff for speaking out and kudos to the voting leaders for providing information for me. So also, Pike Street needs a new parking lot. We need to pave that. We're putting that in the budget for next year. Minivans and golf carts. You might say, what do we need those for? But minivans, in this budget, I'm hoping to get two minivans. We actually transport special education students in buses to long distances. We would be saving the district a tremendous amount of money if we purchased these minivans and put fewer students on there as opposed to putting three students on a mid-size or larger bus and have them drive out. We will return our investment in a short period of time. Also, golf carts. There are a few events, graduation, even football games, where we rent golf carts. We could purchase them in next year's budget and break even point, it's like three to five years where we're returning our money around in terms of what we expense out versus purchasing. So I put that in the budget. Also, some safety in the high school gym, the wall mats, they're wearing down. We're hoping to replace those wall mats, that's a safety issue. There's some things in the budget what we have to change in terms of, because our logo is changing and our name. And that would be some of the scoreboards in the gyms and the scorer tables. Also, our wrestling mat has a logo and also has been aged out. So we're looking to purchase two new wrestling mats and hopefully improve some athletic and fitness equipment. And we're going to be moving this entire meeting to the boardroom, our new boardroom, which will eventually be put into Pike Street. We need furniture for that. So you won't see us walking through down here with our chairs from guidance. They'll actually be set up and a table will be set up. So hoping that we would include these. These are some of the highlights of the budget. So my original presentation, the rollover budget, was the same from February to March. And then it increased as it is today to be one oh three nine fifty. And my next presentation is May sixth, which will be the public care. Voter registration day is Wednesday, April thirtieth. The district office from eight AM to four PM. And Dr. Bell, I think I'm going to turn to you here to transition this presentation.
I said, I told you administrators today that my first year back, we had six things we had to vote on. Last year, we only had five. This year, we only have to vote on four. So we're making it simpler each year. So in addition to the budget, there'll also be school board elections. There'll be three people, the three highest vote getters will get three-year terms. The fourth highest vote getter will be one year. All the petitions aren't due yet, so we can't announce exactly who all the candidates will be. There's two propositions in addition to the budget, the board elections. The first one is Phase Five's capital project, that is forty-nine point nine million dollars. That is worked here for high school and middle school, which is electrical upgrades on this campus. All new heating, ventilation and air conditioning for this campus. That'll be the last one. EME has air conditioning. HBE is in the process starting this summer. And then this will get high school, middle school. So all the classrooms in all four schools will have air conditioning if Phase Five passes. And then the other item that we're working on now, we're still working on the logistics of it. And that is the purchase of the Joyland property, which is the property right at the bottom of Hamilton Street. When you come down the hill on the right, behind the green maintenance building. We would buy that land. It's twelve and a half acres and it actually would give us extra field space right there. It would give us future growth if we ever needed to build something. It actually connects all the way to Glenette Field. So we would be able to connect these two campuses, East Main Street campus to the two oh nine campus. We could pave it, light it, put cameras and have a walkway so kids could go back and forth. Kids that come across town, the walkers, kids that need to go to Glenette Field for practices, things of that nature. But it does a couple of things. A, it's always great to add onto your campus for more space when you can, because you never know what you're going to need in ten, twenty, thirty years from now. Number two, it's great to connect the campuses. And we talked last month about school security. If God forbid, something happened on this campus and we had to evacuate all the kids out of this building, we could move them to Glenette Field and have parent reunification at Glenette Field. If something happened at EME, we could bring all the kids from EME to Chase Field and have reunification. Because if something catastrophic happens out of campus, it immediately gets closed down by the police, it's a crime scene, and no one will be allowed on campus. So you can't get your kid, no matter how hard you try. So we have to have a place to take people to do reunification if something should happen that's catastrophic. And it doesn't have to be necessarily a school shooting. It could be to move kids or draw from a tornado or something like that, you know, where you need to evacuate the scene. The other thing is, the other perk about buying land is that you control what gets built there. As opposed to if somebody else buys it, you have no control what gets built there. And it could look like absolute crap. After we spent all this money on all our facilities, you could come down to Hamilton Street Hill and have shacks on the right-hand side. So there's three things. Connect the campuses, future growth, and control what gets built there. So we're working on that now. We're still in the middle of lots of paperwork with appraisal, the lawyers, and the title searchers. So but our hope is to have everything done in time so that we can vote on the Joyland property on May twentieth. Two locations, just like we've done the last few years, both here at the high school or at HBE. Your voting location hasn't changed. The only change down here, instead of using the all-states gym, we're going to use the new library right out in front. It's brighter, it's easier to find, it's pretty. So we thought that would be great for the taxpayers to come and see the new library and see where their tax dollars are going. So the budget, the school board elections, Capitol Phase Five, and the Joyland property.
No, you're good. Yep.
That's all, Mr. Tim?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay. Next up is Tanya Duryea, Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services.
Just a few things. I'd like the board to know, last four days, we appointed Hees as our data coordinator today. We had a great data team meeting. Actually, we had about thirteen items on the agenda and we went over an hour that was allotted. So you'll be aware that we are really scrubbing our data, looking at the new data that's required by the New York State Education Department and creating systems and structures to make sure that our reporting is accurate and reflects what we are doing. To date, we have, in terms of the registration of data, we have sixteen registered and eleven pending appointments right now for our UPK program. Meaning seventy-nine out of the eighty-seven spots that we have for our free four-year-old program are accounted for. In terms of the kindergarten registration, we have EME, eighty-nine registered students. We have twenty unregistered students from our census. HBE, we have forty-one registered and four unregistered from our census. And this was because of Jane Wachowski and Mr. Marala putting out that census so we know how many one-year-olds, two, three, four-year-olds are out there. So we suspect, based on our current cohorts and trajectory, we have anywhere from twenty to forty students out there who we're not aware of. I encourage parents to please sign up for our new system, Parents Square, to get updated daily notifications in terms of your child's attendance. Because attendance, as we know, truly matters and makes a difference in progress and success. The last thing I wanted to invite the board to is on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, we have what we call our preschool, special education transition meeting for our families. This is invitation-only to our preschool families and they're allowed to bring their children because we don't want babysitting to be a barrier to prevent them from attending this meeting. I asked, and I know Mr. Harris has attended this meeting in the past. And it's informational, Mike, where we want to embrace welcome and ease any kind of anxiety or unknown for our parents who are raising children with disabilities. Our school psychologists, Mrs. Harris and Mrs. Johnson attend that meeting. Our related service providers, speech and TPT attend that meeting. And it's, as well as our teachers have attended that the general and special education volunteer, they're trying to attend. It's a very intimate time where we rotate through. There's a long presentation, Mrs. Fitzgerald has done a fabulous job. And we began this in 2022 when we came, both of us came back to Port Jervis. And it's beautiful, because it's difficult to raise a child with a disability. And we want the families to have trust and faith in Port Jervis and the school district. And start off on the right foot is very important. So if you're available on April twenty-ninth, Tuesday at six o'clock. Thank you to Mr. Tim Creedley for allowing us to host it in your building. Please join us to the board members. And one last reminder, the third day is the Special Olympics, May seventeenth at Goshen School District. If you can make it even for a half hour, I encourage you in the public to please attend because we will be hosting in 2027. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for those reports. That brings us to consent agenda items. These items include: Item A, which is minutes, Board of Education, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Item B, minutes, Board of Education's special meeting, March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Item C, district treasurer's financial report, February two thousand twenty-five. Item D, district treasurer's financial report, March two thousand twenty-five. Item E, scholarship, Daniel Almert Memorial Scholarship. F, scholarship, Daniel Almert Memorial Theater Scholarship. Item G is a donation, one thousand dollars from NYSER for District Business Office Appreciation Day. Item H is a disposal request, district equipment. Item I, disposal request for food service equipment. And item J is the approval of the April twenty-fourth, two twenty-five consent agenda items. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Bill and Joe, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We've already done six consent agenda items. That brings us to action items, number seven. First item up, A, is a roll call vote. Resolution for the adoption of the Port Jervis City School District proposed budget for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year and to place the resolution on the ballot for voter approval on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. May I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor? Second, Joe and Kathy. Thank you. Are there any questions or further discussion? Okay, roll call votes. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
My clothes nice? And I am also a yes. Motion carried. Item B, change the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five student calendar, making Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, a holiday, and the district will be closed. May I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor? Kathy, Joe. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C is a resolution, approval of the Boese's administrative budget for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. May I have a motion and a second to the floor? Bill and Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, resolution. The election of three candidates to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Each candidate to serve a three-year term. We have William Boss, Edwin Estrada and David Eaton. May I have a motion and a second to bring this item to the floor?
One.
Judy and Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, resolution, approval of cooperative purchasing through the Orange Ulcer Cooperative Bid Committee for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor? Kathy, Joe, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, approval of construction manager for Capitol Project Phase Five, Schoolhouse Construction Services. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor? Kathy and Joe, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, approval of dormitory authority of the state of New York, bond financing agreement and letter of representation. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor? Judy, God, Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, Capitol Project allowances and change orders. May I have a motion and a second? Kathy and you. Any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to note that if you noticed it, we're actually getting credit back.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a change. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item I, new reading program, K through five, H and H, into reading. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor? Judy?
Joe.
Bill? Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. J, trip, eighth grade trip to Washington DC, March nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Motion and a second? Kathy, Joe. Questions or discussion? Just before, right before. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item K is a resolution, school district leader internship, Jessica McInerney. Motion and a second to bring to the floor? Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item L, PJTA MOA, CSE meetings, clubs postseason and OM coordinator. May I have a motion and a second? Kathy, Joe, thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item M, CSEA MOA, workers' compensation addition. Questions or discussion? All in favor? Oh, would you like to motion that? Kind of like in robot mode right now, as long as I'm listening. So Kathy, is a motion?
That's because poor Judy's over there by herself, so she doesn't have a group that, you know, usually jumps out.
It's a weird. So I got Kathy on a motion and Bill Harris on a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item N, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four independent internal audit report. An independent audit report corrected that action plan of response. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll be the second.
Judy and Mark. Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to board member items, board committee reports. We have Buildings and Grounds Committee, anything from that? Nothing to report. DLT Committee, Kathy?
DLT, we're going to hold a joint meeting with all of them on next Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, before Pike Street. And we're going to do our annual review of the code of conduct, which is required for our public hearing and adoption. I thought you didn't call it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Dear Park Ladies, Jill Andrea.
Many is, I think that one, so any Park member, go to the, at your park website. So you understand exactly what you need to be able to get rid of whatever it is you want to get rid of in May. Other than that, there's also, if you have any hazardous ways, basis, maybe seventeen, or whatever, we have a list of collecting.
And dear Park guys? Do you say where?
Yeah, it's just Orange County, all of Orange County.
Thank you. We do not have our Port Jervis ladies on today. Education Committee.
The next meeting is the seventh, okay?
The seventh?
Yep, at Port Fifteen.
Health and Wellness, anything from that?
Yes.
Yes, Nancy Dunn, Mrs. Dunn was in attendance at the meeting. The Health and Wellness Committee, that on March twenty-sixth, and it was well-attended. Building administrators provided a copy on the air initiatives and wellness initiatives occurring in the buildings with our students and staff. As you can see, for Mrs. Rizner, the high school social worker, there's a lot going on in terms of having our students and allowing for our students to hear that message out to just get the great public practices. Lead nurse, Lori Sexton, discussed with our committee, having our monitor of security trained in CPR first aid in the Hyman for our September PD. Dr. Wachowitz is also working on that, with us to secure the training and to offer that to anyone who would like to have it. As you can see, Mr. Gettmer, I butchered that name, Chrissy G. Venelio's husband, James. I can say that name. He was also in attendance at that meeting and everyone was very grateful. And it's certainly something that we are going to arrange for our faculty staff and employees, anyone who would like to have access to that training.
Does that include AED?
AED training is certainly should, and I will add that to the list. Mr. Santiago?
Yeah, I think anybody that needs to have it, yeah, it's part of it.
We also discussed Narcan as well. So the Narcan, the AED, the first aid, the CPR, the Hyman. Also, we did have probation of the, they'll build a proper term, Mrs. Dunn would, if she were here. But there's the device that suction's out that our.
You have a life vest?
Life vest. So our folks have been trained on the life vest. And stop the bleed is another training that we discussed. So we're going to expand and broaden the different trainings that may save lives and just improve our safety. That was discussed at the meeting. Lastly, the only change that was discussed was a big noted change from the New York State Education Commissioner. They are recommending to, actually, they need an amendment to provide exceptions from typical assessment requirements for major life events such as mental conditions, death of a family member or other trauma. And it allows the superintendent, principal or head of the school to afford students a pathway who are impacted by trauma to make a local determination and grant exemption regarding that assessment requirement. And we know that there's been a lot of discussion about redefining the pathway for graduation and the elimination of the rigid exams. So Mr. Lozaro has been meeting with his guidance counselors and his administrative colleagues to identify students who are primarily experiencing trauma because we have, the rigid exams are on their way. They may be an area for our graduation. And that was, I need to discuss that. Questions?
No, that was quite a bit, thank you. Productive meeting. We don't have our NISP delegate tonight. We do have our county board delegate, Joe Harris.
Yes, the Orange County School Board Association met on April third, where we were given a presentation on current legal and collective bargaining issues that NISP will be detailing in greater detail, of course, comes September, in July, with the new school year coming up. I sent each one of you a copy of the presentation so you can look it over. And our next meeting is going to be May seventh, where there is no presentation this month because the last few have taken several hours. What we decided to do is, we had one last year that worked out very well. We're just doing a roundtable discussion of just the Orange County School Board members, along with the members from Boese's. And we have seventeen districts in Orange County. As many districts that come to the meeting will be just sitting there. And we'll just be talking about what's going on in our districts, what we're looking for in the future and what we expect to come out of this month. Tell me about it.
Very good. Brings us to policy, Kathy?
Policy, we're meeting Tuesday, May thirteenth, in Mr. Tim's office.
Excellent. Anything from Safety Committee?
I'll report, I'll report out on that. Mike is not here. So the Safety Committee, he met on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. Justin Bosh and somebody named John Tim reported out on the following. The district will be purchasing Atlas IED speaker, which we illustrated on Mr. Tim's presentation. The automation has completed the EME building. They're currently working on HBE and will move the two oh nine complex after HBE. EME has implemented a twenty-second delay in deactivating their door swipes during a lockdown. This delay will allow ample time for students in the hallways to enter the nearest classroom. Armored run, the protective window coating is almost complete. Metal detectors will be strategically used during summer school. This will allow us to learn the process and prepare us to make use of the metal detectors at the start of the next school year. Exterior strobe lights will be coming soon. These lights will provide visual notice from the exterior of a building in lockdown. Law enforcement has been conducting practice drills in the buildings when schools are not in session. This allows law enforcement to come familiar with the buildings. Fire alarms and radios are being replaced and updated as needed. We discussed the purchase of Joyland, like Dr. Eldon, and it's the, as related to safety, the fact that we could acquire this property, we can walk from EME to two oh nine, vice versa, in the case we need to relocate students during evacuation and reunification. All buildings are on schedule for conducting all their safety drills. And there will be a building level of safety meetings before the end of the school year. Law enforcement will be involved in conducting tabletop drills specific to each building. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Brings us to board member comments. Just go around the table. Judy?
I'd just like to congratulate the ten-year teachers and welcome our new teachers.
Very good. Kathy?
I just want to also congratulate our new teenagers and wish them many happy, fulfilling years here in the Port Jervis district. I'd like to express my thanks to Mr. Tim and all of the staff for getting this swept together. I know it's not easy, especially with the state, because he contributed their part and have to work with the teenagers. I'd also like to thank those. Um, I'd also like to thank those in any way responsible for the new hires on tonight's agenda. Because good qualified candidates are getting harder and harder to find. And to think the Port Jervis already has locked in some of these people in the most difficult positions to fill, uh, is really fantastic. So thank you very, very much for the board planning. And I feel one very appreciative of the members who are going to serve. My family and I greatly enjoyed Annie and thank all those involved. And we're looking forward to uses in the middle school in two weeks. Um, congrats and thanks to our security officer who saved the life of Mrs. Heimlich. And thank the kids from the Port Jervis Coalition for their presentation. And last but not least, very happy birthday to a very special man. The Port Jervis is very lucky to have him.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I can't beat that, so I'll give it up.
Yeah, same with me. Um, congratulations to, uh, all the tenured members and new hires. Um, and thank you to everybody for the, you know, great presentations. And I just want to mention, uh, Little League opening day is Saturday. If anybody's interested in seeing our, our youth play some baseball and softball, we're not rated out.
You're forty-three.
Watch.
Started when he was ten. Mark.
So, uh, several things, certainly tenure, uh, new hires, the kids, fantastic. Um, I do have, uh, three things. One, I didn't see any, two things I never thought I would see in my life. Uh, not only tap dancing, but a tremendous level of tap dancing in a musical. And second, having a real dog on stage was unbelievable. Uh, the young lady that, uh, that controlled that dog, God bless. Uh, they say something in acting, never act with kids or animals. And, uh, she pulled it off tremendously. Um, I, I just want to reiterate something when, when it comes to, because again, it just feels like we get a lot of questions. Anyone that's borrowed money four years ago for a house or a car compared to today knows the effect, uh, and the change that's occurred with interest rates. And, and how much it's affected the money going out of your pocket just to pay that extra interest. So if you have questions as to why we're doing these capital projects now, it's twofold. One, I think we have maybe pushed off some of these projects that we just have to do. We have to fix our rules. We have to put air conditioning, we have to do these things. But to take advantage of where we are in the money situation right here, right now, we are getting more money back from the state aid than we ever could have four or five years ago. So doing it now is why we have to do it. And doing it in a way that allows us to not increase the budget, uh, i- is a tremendously good use of money. So again, I, I want to break it down to the easiest way of looking at it. If you bought a car four years ago when interest rates were three percent versus buying a car now when it's seven percent, you understand the, how much timing matters. And so that's why we're doing these things. Finally, I, I do want to talk a little bit, uh, I had the pleasure, as many people here did, of, of being at the DARE graduation a few weeks ago at, at HBE. And, uh, it was amazing. And what also was amazing was how many parents were there. And Supervisor Spears of the town of Deer Park made something and commented on how the support of the parents has made such a difference when it comes to the DARE program. Um, I personally want to take it one step a little bit further. Um, any possibility of positive education cannot just rely on teachers and administrators. It has to come from the parents as well. And so I, but I saw it there and I saw how many parents were there. I want to challenge every parent in our district for the next two months. I want you to ask your kids every day when they come home from school, two questions. One, what did you learn today? And two, did you finish your homework? Because parent involvement has a direct effect on a child, a child's success. So I challenge all of, all of you parents, uh, all seven of you listening to me right now, to, to ask those two simple questions of your kids every day between now and June twenty-fifth. Because you will be amazed at the answers you get by asking those two very simple questions. So that and a tap dancing dog, what more can you imagine?
Still? Okay. That brings us to our adjournment. Uh, item A, we have dates to remember. Uh, Bill, you want to go first?
Wednesday and Thursday, April thirtieth and May first, New York State grade three through five math assessments will be all day at both our elementary schools. Thursday and Friday, May first, May second, New York State grade six through eight ELA assessments will be all day at the Port Jervis Middle School. Thursday, May first, is the College, Tech, and Military Commitment Day, all day at the high school. Also, ten o'clock in the morning at the high school, the new auditorium will be the Kaike doll awards. And also Thursday, May first, is multicultural night, six through eight, in the Port Jervis Middle School Gymnasium. Friday, May second, is the middle school string fling dance, six through eight, at the middle school in the gymnasium. PTA Family Fun Night, Book Bingo at EMN in the cafeteria, six to seven PM. Tuesday, May sixth, the Seal of Bilatteracy, I-Literacy Showcase, seven thirty to eleven thirty AM at the high school. And also Tuesday, May sixth, will be our next Board of Education meeting and our public budget hearing will be held right here at seven o'clock.
Excellent, thank you. That brings us.
Just one correction, I may have made a mistake on the notes we gave Bill. Kaike doll will be actually on Friday, May second, instead of May first.
Thank you. Brings us to item B, adjournment of our business meeting. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? I have several motions. I'm gonna go with Joe and Tanya. The time is twenty twenty-eight, eight twenty-eight. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Now, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, have a good one.